For Borough Council regular meeting September twentieth, twenty twenty-three with our agenda. So we have a call of words. And next we'll have a roll call.
Okay, President Ferguson.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember Cresser.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Gerard.
Here.
Manager Snyder.
Here.
Borough Solicitor Harper.
Here.
All right, now, if everyone will stand, we'll have our pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the one in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of its borders.
Councilman Stevens, if you do our invitation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your countless blessings on us and our community, and for this opportunity to serve our community. Guide us and give us wisdom in all that we do at Ray and Jesus name.
All right, we'll go to item one, approve of the meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting?
Second.
I got a motion, Councilman Stevens, and second, Councilman Cresser. There is one change. After our meeting, we will not have an executive session, but we will continue our strategic planning meeting, which is open to the public. So we will continue that after our council meeting. Are there any other changes or amendments? If not, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? There are none. All right, I have two approval of the meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three workshop, regular meeting?
Approved.
But I got a motion from Councilman Gerard, a second from Councilman Stevens. Any questions, changes, or amendments? If not, all in favors?
Any.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passed. All right, we'll go to item three, public input. If there's anyone from the public who would like to make a statement, please rise, state your name, your address, and reason for addressing council.
I would. Let me take a photo up here.
Make sure the mic is on when you.
Oh, hello, you two. My name is Jerry Damas. I'm from East Avenue, Upper Hatfield, now known as Maple Avenue. I watch Beverly Hillbillies. And Jethro Boudin, if you're aware, he did a lot of ciphering with mine. He's a math genius, not really. So I decided to do something. I got my electric bill, which is not a problem, but I see it costs fifty-one cents to mail it out. I got a whole day downstairs. He told me there is fifteen hundred and fifty go out a month. Electric bills through the mail. That comes to nine hundred, seven hundred and ninety dollars a month, or ninety-three thousand dollars for a hundred and eighty a year. For the mail. Now, the sewer bill is a little bit different. There are three here per quarter for one section, which comes to six hundred and twelve dollars. And then seven hundred in another section, which goes from fourteen hundred and twenty-eight, or a total of ninety-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars a year in the mail. Now, I understand not everybody can get email. But I don't see the problem is that we, you, you came as the people of the borough and offered to send their bill through an email, like I guess through the water department or the littering department. Now, money. Ninety-five thousand a year, that's a lot of money for mail, money you could be saving. What do you think, people?
Not a manager, but you.
I'd like to, I'd like to answer that question first. Well, I'm the, I'm the chairman of the utilities committee here in the borough.
Uh huh.
And we already have a email program that's in use. It's been publicized quite a bit, and we ask people to sign up for it. And I don't know the exact figure as far as how many do, but we don't have that many people that have actually signed up for it.
Or.
It's been for what, two years? You mean for about two years now?
Well, I signed up for it, and I was still getting the paper bill or the cardboard bill.
You signed up and you're still getting?
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay, can, you would have to look into that and see.
I'm just saying not everybody in the boroughs want to do this as they age out. You know, everyone's come in and will have the email. And I don't see where you're spending ninety-five thousand dollars. That's a lot of change.
Yeah, there's two, there's two things that go out by email. Now, you have to sign up for it, and we publicize that on the website, and also the Facebook page has been out there. But the electric bill goes out every month that way, and also the, the quarter, the water bill, which we're also saying.
Well, the sewer bill, the water bill. Yeah.
Yeah, that's been in effect for about two years now.
Well, I think it'd be safe, I wouldn't pay to take another push at it. To see if other people would like to have their bill sent via the email as opposed to the physical mail. I'm not trying to put the garbage on the post office, but I'm just saying there's money here.
Right. Oh, I agree with you. Absolutely.
Now, I think my figures are correct. I think.
Yeah, yeah, I'm.
Although Jethro Boudin, of course, is not.
I understand where you're coming from, trust me.
Okay.
Yeah, and just as, just as a sidelight, we are now looking around instituting so people don't even have to mail their bills in again anymore. Where we're going to be hopefully this year instituting where they can go online and pay their bills through ACH on a portal. Instead of having to mail a check in, which would be a big inconvenience.
My check comes from banks, I'm on the bank account, on my bank account, and mail them, I'll send you the check.
Well, this would be similar, some they would institute themselves. It's not in effect yet, but we're trying to get that started for this year.
And maybe if all money saved, you can buy some new audio equipment. Thank you.
I appreciate your input.
Well, hey, it's money.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Right.
I imagine we spend a lot of money on mail, and we need discounts.
We do, we do have postage and delivery, so I can look into it. I certainly can gather the figures, and we can definitely make another push for people to sign up for emailing. That's not a problem. It's probably with just a borough informer that went out on the information page, and it's in every manager report at the workshop meeting. Encourage residents to sign up. We can make another push for that, and I will get the figures of what we spent in postage thus far here to date.
I didn't recall seeing numbers that big in our budgets, so. Jerry, thank you for that. We'll get the numbers and we'll.
It's money.
No, no, absolutely. No, just saying thank you for the input.
Well, it's not a problem. Wherever I can help, I like to help with the audio equipment.
All right, I'm going to assume there's no other public input, so we'll go on to item four announcements.
Next council meeting is October fourth workshop and October eighteenth, regular meeting at seven P M. here in council chambers. Our office is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at eight A M. here in council chambers. Planning Commisses Commission is scheduled to meet on Monday, October second at seven P M. here in council chambers. The Hatfield Museum Historical Society is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at seven P M. here at the Hatfield Borough Office in council chambers. And Hatfield Borough Fall Festival is scheduled for this Saturday, September twenty-third at three P M. on East Lincoln Avenue. Weather pending. If we run into weather, we will make an announcement by Friday afternoon.
One other announcement, probably good to mention that the chipping, the borough's chipping for a reason, coming up first Monday in October, so residents should, they're here to take advantage of that.
October second.
October second.
Will that be on social media as well?
Yes.
It is. Best seven mic. Tell people not hearing you on TV.
I have very little to say today, so. Especially after the planning. All right, if no other announcements, we'll go on to item five, the Hatfield Police Station Presentation.
Good evening, council. I think is the audio working okay, sir?
Dave is called Button, not Button.
I'm so used to saying commissioners, I'm training myself all day to say council members, but I appreciate you having us here tonight. I'm Aaron Vero, Township Manager. Before we get into Chief's presentation, I just wanted to say I've been working in the township now for going on eleven years. And I want the council members to know that, in my opinion, our relationship between the town and borough has never been better. I think it's always been a good relationship, in my opinion, but I think it is in an excellent place. You have great staff. I know Jamie very well. She does an exceptional job, and I am grateful, everyone at our end is grateful for our working relationships. So I want to start with that. Chief's probably going to go on for hours with this presentation, and then he's going to hand it back to me. We're going to talk about this new, our biggest investment in the public safety that we've ever made at Hatfield Township, and we're excited to present it tonight. Before, Chief's got some introductions and a presentation to do, and then I'll go back up.
Aaron, just to add on to that, we hear nothing but good things about the relationship with you guys as well from our staff, so.
Thank you. You're a great, great team.
Yeah, yeah, you guys have me too, so yeah. Was Aaron said, thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to consider this kind of catching up and then moving ahead. And with that, Lieutenant Robinson is going to present our newest officers to council. Try to put some names and some faces.
So you may see some familiar faces here tonight, but I also want to introduce some of our newer officers. I know I give you rosters. When people are coming on board, I let you know about what the hiring process is, where we're at in it. But rarely you can get to see everybody all together, so we really wanted to give this opportunity before the presentation. It just seemed to make sense so that you can know who your officers are. So you probably recognize Sergeant Boyd in the back and Sergeant Graham, and you hear more about those two a little bit. But Officer Matt Barnett is one of our newer officers, so he is badge number seventy-six. Officer Nick Wallen, he's one of our new officers. He's badge number seventy-eight. Recognized Corporal Sloan, he's the head of our highway safety unit. And so when you asked me to get the traffic studies done, that's the landline signs. Officer, it seemed to be Officer Matthew Laurentis. He is in academy right now and graduating next month, so we're looking forward to having him on the street. Officer Wiley Hefner, not exactly new, but new-ish out of academy, so we wanted to bring her in so you could meet her. She's batch number seventy-three. Behind Officer Hefner is Officer Mike Burdick, who is a longtime officer here, and will be retiring. He's our one that is retiring very soon, so. After many years of service, so Officer Matt Bachman, he's not new. He's probably a face that you recognize. And then Officer Ken Peck, who does the truck inspections. So when we do the truck details, you use the man you see rolling around in the trucks. Can I get everybody? Go inside if you want. So I'm going to turn it back over to the chief to.
In comparison, I'm badge nineteen, if anybody's interested. With that, Jeff and Kristen tomorrow. So you know our department's going through a lot of change, they're going through a lot of changes over the last couple of years. You can see the four that we have here, we've hired, I think we, half of patrol is probably new to all of us. With that, everybody also knows that Lieutenant's going to be retiring.
They have everything.
Thirty, I think is her last name. And everybody also knows that Lieutenant Sorel has left us, we're in all positions. As this transition goes on, Sergeant Graham and Sergeant Porter are going to be, are going to be our new tenants. And Sergeant Graham is going to be the borough liaison, so get a good look at him. He's a guy. He's a guy. And we're going to start testing for these things in the next couple of months. We actually have to test for new hires because we have Mike Burdick leaving, and Jane will be leaving within this testing cycle probably, so. We'll be looking at at least two new officers this time around, and then we have to test for detective, we have to test for sergeant, and we have to test for lieutenant, so there are going to be a lot of changes coming. Let me just see who it is. Remember Graham.
Yes.
Now, Chief, you know you're not allowed to let anyone else retire for the next ten years. I'm in that group. Exactly. And actually with that, so Mike is going to be leaving, Jane will be leaving, Kevin Fox leaves October, October twenty-four. So we're probably looking at, Aaron doesn't know yet, but we're probably looking at four people to replace the three. This is news to him tonight. Probably what's going to happen, so the department, the department will be growing, and all the training that goes on, we're very confident in people we hired, but a lot of time and effort is in the very months fee. Takes a lot of years to get to, you know, experience some of these guys have, so. We're on it, and again, we hired good people here, you're all good folks. Next part is in looking at leading into the new building. We've, and Aaron and myself have been having discussions about this for quite a while, from where was the building going to be? And one of the main concerns was, let's get it near the borough. Let's make it more centric to the entire town. So you see, we picked a good spot, and with that, we're like, how can we be more inclusive of the borough? How can it stop being the Hatfield Township? We want Borough Council, we want the citizens of the borough to understand that we are just Hatfield. Yeah, we answer different gods, if you will, but we're all one, we're all here working, yeah. So we decided on our new building, we're going to be putting a new patch. And Madam Ma, Mayor, and Mr. President, James, can you come down? So this plaque has some of our old patches, and it also has the old borough patch on there, and at the top is the patch that we're going to. So we're now just going to be the Hatfield Police. We're no longer, everything we say is going to, we say Hatfield Police, from our cars to our uniforms, through attrition, to our letterheads, to everything, it's going to say Hatfield. That's going to be on a new building. You see on the, on the chimney area, it's going to say Hatfield Police.
This is our JCP.
Either you want.
Thank you. He can take mine, my kid.
Sure.
Thank you.
We're one, the new building serves both communities and yours wants. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
She finally had a good idea, and then he's retiring on us. Just kidding. Lizzy, if you could go back a little bit, please? Let's keep going.
Oh, it started me at the end.
Start here. And by the way, I haven't been shy of saying that we have the best police department anywhere. I think everyone here will agree to that. Tell all of our colleagues, any elected official I run into, this is the best police department in Pennsylvania without question. And it's because of Chief's leadership and all the men and women, including an amazing job to serve, so. Why we're here tonight, council members and mayor, is to just give you an update on where we are with this new police station. Like I said earlier, this is the biggest investment in the public safety that we've made in Hatfield Township. Like Chief said, everyone knows where our existing station is, and we decided to move into a location that was more centralized, where we can serve both towns. A lot of people have been asking, all right, the station is going there, what are you doing with the nature area? So very happy to say that there are thirty-four acres behind the police station that will be preserved in perpetuity. I know Ms. Harper is very interested in these initiatives. This is land that was acquired by the township with some open space funding from the county. And unlike some other communities, Hatfield was committed to preserving that space forever. So we will not be disturbing our nature area. We hope to improve our nature area with this project. One thing to consider is that this property here, where you see the station, was going to be developed. There were land development plans coming in for a Dollar General, Dennis, some other random uses. In twenty twenty, we were having some issues, and we made an offer. We were able to acquire the property at an interest rate on our loan of point seven. We got us a good opportunity to secure the property. We've got one of the best museums across the street. We want to improve in our busiest corridor in Hatfield Township. So the station itself will be three acres with a drive privately for police-only out to Orvilla. Calpathum Orvilla is a busy intersection, as you know, about twenty-four thousand cars daily, and we spent a lot of time and effort fixing that intersection. Some people say it's worse now. That's why I'm bold, but I don't understand that argument. I think the commissioners did a great job of re lining and making that a safer intersection. With that, we don't want to see our officers get stuck at the intersection if they're going to go call on three oh nine or other places in the town. So we thankfully have the land, and we're able to make this connection, so there will be a police-only drive behind there. For anybody that asks, how are the police going to navigate through the town? That's, that's one of the ways. But the entrance is going to be right at the traffic signal that you see when you go into Snyder Square. We lined up directly at that intersection. The cost of the new signals, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which we just received a grant a month ago, to pay for those expenses. So you'll see later that we are certainly pursuing funding from every source.
Will the, sorry, will the roads be widened? There will be a turning lane into the station?
Facility, if you want to go back, Lizzy. So there'll be some mire widening.
I think it's shown on John.
So we will show the site plan, and a few more will show exactly what we're doing there. So one, Mr. President, one of the things that's important to us is using this as an opportunity to make sure people are aware of where our nature area actually is. Right now, there's a very small sign, so you'll see some of the improvements that we'll look at in the site plan that will get our residents into that area a little better. All right, so why are we here? Why are we building this station? A lot of people ask us this. This was our department when we built the first station. Eleven officers, Chiefs in the back, just kidding.
Yeah.
Eleven officers, small town, small department, community has grown significantly since. I think we all understand that. We are, if you want to go to the next slide, Lizzy, we're now up to thirty officers. This is at a recent retirement. We have to grow with our community. We have to make sure we can provide this service adequately, and we need, we need a home that is worthy of our department. So moving on, so here's the site plan. And, and before we continue, I want to introduce our project manager. So Tony Ganguza is with Boil Construction. Tony has overseen dozens of public projects throughout his career. He actually dabbled in municipal management as well, and is engineered by trade. So he is taking us through this process. It's certainly not a process that we can do without him. But if you, if you want to talk about some of the improvements, Tony, if you have a mind, you probably need this mic wherever he's going, right, for the viewers.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for having me. I just wanted to echo, and I have not worked with you at all, but I can, and I've told the Board of Commissioners that in my thirty years of doing this, this is definitely, without a question, the best project I've ever done. You know, Aaron and Chief and Scott and that whole group was incredible to work. It's just been a it's just been a great project to work with, with great people, to tell you that. So we, I think they certainly have left no stone unturned in going through this process. It's been a very methodical and diligent process in putting these plans together. And you'll see with the building, the chief has taken a tremendous amount of time to make sure that it was, it was well thought out, well laid out, and accomplishes everything that they need to serve a police plant. So this is the site plan. You can see it's, as Aaron said, it's off at the intersection of Calpath Road. We are making probably about a million dollars worth of improvements at the intersection of Calpath Road. And that, across from the mall there, there is a lane, an extra widening going on in that area to get people in and out of the site better. There'll be, as you can see, a straight in the left turn lane, will be also a straight in the right turn lane coming out of the side. There's also a secondary egress and entrance off of the, in this area right here. So there's two entrance points and two exits off of Calpath Road, and as Aaron alluded to, there's that, the access drive that's going out to Orvilla out the back. Just to go over the site a little bit, while I'm up here, the building's about eighteen thousand square feet. Again, Chief will go through the inside of it with you. We have some parking in the front for pedestrians, for people visiting the police station. There's going to be secure gates, as you can see, as you make a left into the site, where the police vehicles will be. There'll be solar canopies over top of both police parking areas. On this side, this side, you'll see that in future renderings. We have a three, three-bay impound garage in the back left corner, which is tied to a firing range, a separate firing range building. So the back building is a three-bay garage for impoundment, which is definitely going to be built. The firing range is an alternate bid item, which we hope to build. And that's attached to the, a three-bay garage. Parking in the back for police, not police vehicles, but employee vehicles. We're going to have some electric charging stations for the future of the new police vehicles, so there'll be at least four charging stations out of the gate when we build it, with the, with the opportunity to add more. And we'll conduit from more along both the canopy eyes. I think that's probably about it in terms of the segment. You wanted to maybe go to the next slide? Sure? Okay, great. So. Yeah, it's a beautiful building, right? It's going to be a Hatfield Police monument sign in the front, which would be just off Calpath Road. We have a memorial plaza, as you can see where the flag is. We're trying to make it very inviting and the ability for anybody to come in and sit there and just, you know, hang out there. Brick with some sholdice stone, effus surrounding the building. Again, we talked about the solar canopies, which are going to be built as part of the base bid of the project. Those are the canopies on the left-hand side protecting the vehicle, the police vehicles. And there's the three-bay garage in the back and the fire. Just another view. Again, there's going to be gates, secure gates. You can see the one there. There's going to be another one as you head out the back to go to the access drive. There's going to be a third one along this entry lane too, so just so people, when they come in, they can't get back to the police on the access track. So there's three gates on the site, and there's going to be a fourth gate at Orvilla and the access track. For only police vehicles. There'll be fob entry. The police vehicles will have, I'll call it a fob, but a fob type in the vehicle, so then when the vehicle pulls up, the police vehicle pulls up to gate opens.
Quick, one question for you. So on the, the police only entrance off of Orvilla, when, when you've got the fobs, as you're calling them, to, for the police vehicles getting it out, it, will those gates be right to the street, or will they be, will it be in a little bit so that there's a turnaround lane? Because I'm assuming people are going to not know they're not supposed to turn in there.
They're in a little.
Get out.
Yeah, yeah, they're in a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there'll be a turnaround lane?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
There'll be signs as well. Yeah, there'll be signs there too. Police vehicles on.
Yeah, no, I've, I've done construction projects like that, and people sign. Yeah. No, I've I've done construction projects like that and people signs gates, they they don't, you know, there'll be issues though. So, having to turn around is it's critical and it sounds like you already planned for it.
One thing that I have a question. Let me, let me just finish this point, sir, if you don't mind. One thing I think will help us is because right now, there's the road that goes into the utility section out there that you guys. Wait, we're actually gonna share that drive.
Okay.
So, I think people are used to knowing that that's not an access and and we're gonna. We'll see, but yes, people are still pulling there, we're gonna make it, uh make sure that they can turn around. Uh good, sir, is it okay?
Yeah, uh will the pockets, which are helped paint for this, have any access to the firing range if still?
As of now, it's it's gonna be for police only. That's certainly something that we can.
How about the radio, uh uh of uh what's that, the uh Caroline Road is calmer by the sewer plant. That's where you guys now.
Right where we are now and and that would be still for police only.
Oh.
We can talk, we can certainly talk about that and.
Well, if you could remind me, that's no use talking about it. What kind of donation are you gonna make to the new station?
Council members, a few things I wanna point out that I I think you'll find interesting on why I'm selecting this design. Um the architect, Michael Keith, from T K O, lived in Hatfield for about thirty years on Orvilla Road. And you'll Larry try and knows a lot more about that house than than I do, but it was, it's the old, it was the owner of that uh. Mitchner, thank you. The Mitchner House owner of Villa, just an interesting footnote, so. Warrington in Bucks County built this station in twenty twenty, Tony, and and Tony was the project manager for that. Chief liked their building. We knew it was something we were pursuing. We we saw the building, chief liked it, so we hired the same design team. We saved about four hundred thousand dollars by reusing the same set of plans and just tweaking. We're there. So, that's what, and and you think we made it two point O, right? We made it, we made it uh slightly better, but it was important to us for it to look right. It's on Calpath Road. It's been dilapidated to that that site for decades. Uh the old bike shop was closed when I got here, so all those things were important to us. Mike, by the way, also designed the Lutheran church in Hatfield. He's an architect that has our town and it's a good fit for what our needs. So, several angles, we're happy to share this for you guys to keep. If you wanna post it anywhere, review it, but just a lot of different angles in the same facility. That we think is gonna be a real nice feature on our road.
You tell me when you want me to stop. You wanna go through all this?
So, just some of the features, you can go to the the text and Chief's gonna go over the interior design and the layout. Uh just to give you a sense on some of his thoughts as he went through it and he included all the officers in our design process. Uh to get a sense on on what the officers were thinking, because the, like Chief will say, this is, it'll be where they spend a lot of time. So, some of the items Tony, Tony talked about, uh having sustainable energy is important to us, so there's gonna be the solar panels. We're hoping to to have some type of partnership with the borough as we get into the, you guys are experts on electric or not. Uh we understand that this building will most likely be there when our entire fleet is electric, so we wanna make sure we're prepared for that. Like Tony said, we have four charging stations right out of the bat, uh but we will have uh conduits and the electricity uh. Prepared for when we have a a fleet of fifteen, twenty vehicles, all electric, so we're we're certainly planning for the future. Um some other items, there there will be a public space out front where you can sit at a bench and and. Potentially ha- uh electric charger out there for the public. We're still trying to figure that out, but it could be wifi, there could be some other features for people. If you get lunch at Giant, want to cross the street before you spend hours at at the museum, looking through our history, you certainly sit there. Uh we talked about all the access, definitely a tricky site, a lot of site work involved, uh which adds to the cost, so. So, Chief's gonna talk us through uh the layout and the. Side of the interior and why it made sense for us to. So, more more than just the design on paper, we've all been in a lot of police stations throughout the years and all police stations are very institutionalized. Just, oh, here we are. These people basically live there, so we have to take into account what's best for the. The minds of the people who live there. Believe me, it could be an ever-suffering event to be in a building that's underground or whatever, so a lot of thought went into that. When I first saw Warrington, like they introduced light into the building. You see their skylights down the main hall. Every office has windows. Right now, that doesn't happen. Majority of these guys are, again, are locked down below level. There's no windows, there's no sunlight. This has a way of impacting your, you know, your health. Uh so, if you start at the top there, that's actually coming in in the main lobby and. With putting into what we need, we also thought about what does the public, what what will, what will welcome the public into the place? Clearly, people come to the police department for many bad things, but people come in with true problems and they wanna feel comfort when they walk in. So, you enter the lobby and officer can greet you, take you into uh immediately into like in a small interview room. And then there's different levels of interview. There's more secure interview, there's interview where we can video, there's interview where we can uh collect audio. There's an interview room for children, all soft furniture and toys and things, because believe it or not, everybody knows a lot of crimes go on involving children. This gives us our our best opportunity to solve a crime from the get-go. Right now, we bring people in, we turn the men's room into a, and juvenile interview. We cut a hole in the wall, close off the door, and that's where we speak children, so you you can see the obstacles that we have there. Uh then we come back and straight down at the bottom, uh as I said, when I presented to the township, that entire area is my office. Now, that's the executive suite, so I'm in the bottom right of that and then the lieutenants will share that area with me. You come back out the main hall, you go down to uh is the kitchen area, which you did, Jay, you can go through the picture, I can explain.
The, there is no more pictures?
Uh yeah, go back to the other.
Oh, the other pictures, okay.
There you go, stop right there.
Okay.
So, it's kinda compressed, the lobby isn't that small, but uh and believe it or not, I am interested in colors. So, we tried to go with colors, again, that weren't institutional colors. We have browns, we have grays, we have blues, we have all this stuff. We're, we're trying to make it a a more inviting space. Again, this is the first thing the public's gonna see. We're proud to have it. We're at a credit police agency. We were part of it. Detective Robinson carried us through that event, which took us years to get there, and we're proud to show it off to the public. We want people to see that that's who we're what we are. There, next one. So, the area on the left is actually, uh we put a storefront on that down in Warrington. They had it completely open. And Warrington actually has thirty-six officers at this point, so they're larger than we are and they have four work areas. And I said to the chief, that's not gonna work for us. Like, our officers have their own work area now. We expanded the garage and so on, give everybody a place to work. And we feel it's very important people have a piece of the geography of the building, like this is mine, this is where my things are. It's, to share something with someone, uh just doesn't fit. Again, we're used to having what we have now. We've built it up over years and that that's what we're gonna do. I think it's gonna be beautiful. We're gonna do that. Yeah, compressed picture. It's actually a little bigger than that. That looks like something at half the village in efficiency, but it's not. It'll be much bigger than, it'll be much bigger than that. And again, an area, it it's right in the center of the building, an area where people can gather. We have people that bring us food on the holidays and so on, where guys can actually have a conversation. So, if I was in that room that I just showed you, I would be here looking out at the kitchen and then to the left of that is the detective's suite. So, the detectives will be coming back into the building with us now instead of down the road. They'll be there and now everybody can congregate and, you know, talk about the stories of the day and that the Eagles lost and all that good stuff. Uh again, we're gonna hold the detective suite. This is the detective suite. Here's uh the room we were talking about, kitchen, detective suite. Uh that was hard with three other detectives. We're actually gonna leave this room open, possibly for a fifth detective in the future. And it was very important that we built the building for the future. This building built to accommodate possibly fifty officers. We have thirty now. Our current building is in its forty-sixth year. So, you figure by the time we move into the new building, we're about forty-eight years, so you have to plan on this building being here for forty-five to fifty years. We have to plan ahead for that. So, from the locker room to the the work areas and everything has been for a bigger department down there. Uh I'm down here with plenty of storage between now and now. If you come my office, any day of the week, there's boxes stacked up all over the place. Because somehow I became the the storage area for the entire department, so they're stacked from floor to ceiling all over the place. We do have an entire holding cell area. Now, in this day and age, we try our best not to keep many people in. We bring prisoners in quickly. We get them out to wherever they need to go, the county prison or so on. We move them around, but nonetheless, we have no idea what the future's gonna bring. If the county has issues down there, staffing and so on, we may end up holding people here. Where we try to get away from it, we may well have to go back to someday, so we have full outfit of something in a cell area for everybody. We have a secure salad port, which we added onto the current building. But basically, you get through with that, a can opener, it's just a little inside. This is a full block building, electric doors. Uh timing, so that we get inside the building with the prisoner and they can't escape or anything. Ev- everything is about security in this place. Uh bullet resistant glass, all all the windows bullet, bullet resistant glass at front lobby. Um you name it, security of the building. We have a camera package like no other. You're not gonna be able to sneak up on us from anywhere, from anywhere, I can assure you. Uh everything about it is ultra-modern, efficient. Safety, security, and really a very important thing I'd go back to is comfort, for us, a comfort in the park. About the best I could tell you any questions.
So, the the lobby area, is that, it seems awfully small, is that, is that just a window rendering?
That's not.
Okay.
It it is much bigger and also, uh while we're on the lobby, we're, there's actually gonna be a standard outside, a blue standard within intercom and so on. So, say it's, uh you know, we're not open twenty-four hours a day. The officers are around, but somebody could be on the street. If an officer's back here with a prisoner, somebody can buzz there and the officer can bring them up on on video. And then say, I'm here to see Officer Smith or whatever, and he can buzz them into the secure part of the lobby where they can't get into the building. But we can at least immediately care for them instead of having to wait outside in the weather, or God forbid, they might have somebody chasing them, they need to get in, we can let them. Yeah, all the areas are are, the footprint is exactly the same as Warrington, but we have adjusted many things inside. And there is more than enough rooms to accommodate, you know, now and the future.
And you mentioned the holding areas. Uh I I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, today, we use holding areas outside. Is, are we increasing that space internally to do more of that or is it?
No, but now we have, we actually have the ability now, we do arrest people that have handicap. We have an availability now to lock them up. Not every place has that. So, we have somebody saying a wheelchair, we have to stay with them. We don't really, we can't put them in a regular cell. Not every place that we use can accommodate that other than the county prison. And as I said, with with staffing, it's always an issue. We bring people to Lansdale, but Lansdale is kind of an intake for the area. And there's times when Lansdale doesn't have enough cells, so we're left to our own wiles.
Okay, so that's really gonna stay the same as what it is today. It's just you've accommodated more space.
Yeah, again, in in thinking about, we don't know what the future brings us. We may have to have a fully active twenty-four hour station sometime in the future. One, one of the council members, if any of you are interested in seeing the Warrington station, taking it towards, Chief or I know, is happy to join in there. They've uh they've been very accommodating to all of our many tours that we take, but all of you will be willing to to join us in Warrington. The chief is very fearful seeing what we've come up with because he knows we're gonna improve on his product and his product is pretty good.
I'm sure his manager's more worried about the extra costs he's gonna ask.
Well, amazingly, Warrington has now gone back to build secondary exit, like we have. They're in the process of building that now. They didn't do that initially, they found out they needed.
Yeah.
I just found out we're hiring another officer and there's fifty-eight cameras in the, what else, Chief? Uh with, I didn't say, you may have already heard, so I have, what, fifty, fifty-five months left and I'll be gone, so. You can deal with me for that long and most of it will be, half of it will be spent in this, so. And then I'll be, you'll be having a new chief. Also gonna have a new manager.
I have a question real quick. So, the road work, uh will the road work go in on Calpath before, as as the first stage of the construction project?
It will.
Okay.
It will.
And when is that slated for date-wise?
We have, we have a slot right after this one, if you don't mind. Uh just quickly, le- leaving those stone unturned, this is not gonna be an inexpensive project. This is gonna significantly cost to the taxpayers and we're respectful of that and aware of that. We're we're pursuing funding from many different sources. Uh this one here, we've already received, like I mentioned, the very traffic signal improvements to two hundred and fifty-five from green light go. Uh please, if if you, if you can, reach out to Representative Malagarian, Senator Colette, we need their advocacy in Erksburg. Uh now, wherever, we leave them off, they're well aware of this project. And have support letters from all of our faith groups, all of our businesses. Uh we have a list of about thirty or forty businesses that that they're willing to write support letters. Because of the work they do, the relationships they've built over the years, people say yes immediately when we ask for help. Uh so, we are seeking a lot of funding. Uh total cost, we're not sure of yet. Uh a few weeks, we'll have a, our last and final cost estimate. Uh and then, and then we're going to finalize our our uh our loan and uh go out to bid at the, actually, let's see, the next slide shows our schedule. For answering a lot of your questions. Uh so, this is, this was from the presentation a few months ago to the board. Uh the commissioners did approve the land development. Uh this, some of this has shifted since. Uh so, we are gonna be putting the bids out at the end of this year and the bids will be ideally awarded early next year now. Uh so, this moved a little bit, uh and we're still hoping to start moving dirt in spring of twenty-four with a, with a moving day, gotta get in. So, Chief's got a good few years in his new office, but thi- this is certainly subject to change. Uh that would be the very ambitious and aggressive schedule, uh but somewhere in that range, we hope, we'll do it. So, financially, Township's in a great position. Uh we've got a decade now without raising tax. Uh we, we are losing a lot of the debt from over the years. Quoting Center and the Township Building. Uh so, this is the be- better, best time than than really ever to to undertake a project like this. And uh once this is done, I feel like our facilities are where they need to be and, you know, hopefully we won't have uh any, any building wise. Uh beyond this for quite some time, so. Grateful for your time tonight and presenting and and again, grateful for your partnership. Uh I think this, the. Mutual way between the two towns, I think is the longest standing. I think we looked at the longest municipal like uh agreement between two municipal colleagues in in the state, which has been. Probably close to fifty years now or something. We've seen a lot of different borough councilmen, a lot of different mayors, a lot of different board commissioners, but everybody has worked well together and made this stay together. It's been a great partnership and believe me, that partnership helps when we apply for funding and uh people in Erksburg see two towns working together. It's, you don't always see that as a venue, so we're grateful for your partnership and don't take it for granted and we're here to serve both communities. So, any, any questions, be happy to uh answer, but thank you for your ongoing support.
One question real quick. Do you need any more letters of support from the borough or borough businesses or is that a part of what you've already got?
Anything I ask, Jamie has been immediately with a, with a sound, maybe yes, but that's a great, uh we we should absolutely include some borough businesses in that. We haven't gotten to that point, uh this is present, I think you should do that, so great suggestion. Thank you, everybody.
Any other questions from public or anyone from council? On behalf of council, I appreciate this. It's, it's a lot of great information. I know we've had a lot of questions back and forth over recent history on it, so. Appreciate the time, appreciate you getting, meet all the new officers and the ones who are retiring. We're sad to see you guys go. We don't really want you to. So, like I said, after this group, chief, no more, no more allowed to go.
That includes you.
That includes you, so. Badge number nineteen. But, no, we, we appreciate it. I mean, we've heard a lot of good comments, both uh from all the officers here. We get a lot of good feedback. Obviously, nothing's perfect and feedback isn't perfect, but overall, to let you guys know, we get a lot of positive feedback, so.
I, I know, I'll say them in front of them every time I see them. I mean, these pe- these guys and the house with the engine that runs everything. Like a phone calls constantly, people thanking us for the attitude that they presented with respect to shit these officers give them. And it's, it's all about them. I mean, we're just sitting at desks, very unwilling.
Yeah. And thank you guys for all the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright.
Now we're all gonna leave, so.
Have a good day.
Let me know about your sensation.
I came here when I couldn't, I broke out. I came here, uh had a pair of tongs. And I, remember that?
Take it out.
I'm gonna get out of here, but let me give this to you. And you can uh, you can check out my figures.
Turn it off then. You can hit that button and the green light should go away. There you are.
I thought that was very impressive.
It is unusual for two municipalities to get along for this long when something as big as the police, it's a real credit to both.
Yeah, I guess we take it for granted, right? Because it's just what we've always operated, right?
But just a few years ago, there was a regional police department that just busted up. It was about five municipalities, up, up, upper box. And it's no longer there. And you guys have kept it going. So that's really very impressive.
All right. Going on, we'll go to item six, new business and discussion items, monthly cash report.
Monthly cash report was located in your packets, um, through, for July, uh, twenty twenty three. Pretty typical, um, if there's questions, I need to answer those.
Sounds like there are no questions. So we'll go on to item B, monthly year to date.
You have figures on what we've made, uh, what we made on the, uh, short term investments, putting them into the notes. Versus if we were still in the market, you have any information about that this week?
So I only know what, um, the statement says on the monthly, the one that Diane created. I know that for the sewer managed that, um, Michael Moses and I were talking about this evening before the strategic planning. He said roughly fifty seven hundred, you may not have sewer manage. Um, so I would assume electric would be similar, but I can check. He said he didn't have like the exact, um, maturity, like. It's because it just wasn't a settlement. Yes. But he said it'll be included in our, um. Statements next month, but I can double check and just get those figures. But I, when I was on the phone, sewer manager was fifty seven.
If I remember correctly, you talked about having a quarter of the checking just to see. All right, monthly year to date.
Monthly year to date report was in your packets through July. As you can see, um, revenues received and expenses used. Forty two percent on both. So we seem to be doing well through the first six months of the year. Um, I know that some expenses that come at, that had come out in July were some of our debt expenses, um, for our, some of our debt payments. Um, I also know we have another one of those in September. So might be why some expenses are a little bit higher than in the previous. But nothing too far off.
All right, monthly investment?
Monthly investment report was included in your packets. I will, um, look at the statements and when they come in, get this numbers that Rich was asking for. But as we previously spoke about, the, um, uh, electric six month matured and for the two fifty, we put it back in at an interest rate of roughly five and a half percent. And we're looking to do that again with the sewer manage that matures tomorrow. So, um, I know council's interested in putting that right back in for the two fifty for another six months and we'll check the status in February, as I just mentioned. Sewer manage was roughly maybe fifty seven hundred dollars. So, um, nothing crazy. We're not breaking the bank here, but we're not losing the money. And I think we're doing a good job hedging the market and that's what we wanted to do. The whole goal was to just be more, um, physically responsible and good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So I think we're doing that by making these small adjustments in our, um. Investments. And again, budget finance and labor will continue to look at the investments and see if there's a long term plan, maybe through twenty twenty four. Um, when these, when the young one year matures and if we want to do that in, uh, the sewer manage, just like we did for electric. So I'll gather that information with Keybank and Michael and then propose something to you.
Monthly EMS?
Monthly EMS report was included in your packets. Total zone calls were fifteen, total V M S C calls were one thousand fifty one. That's roughly one point five percent of all calls were in Hatfield Borough. As you can see, V M S C's level service, ALS paramedic eleven, P L S advanced E M T two and P L S basic E M T two. So again, we continue on that trend between one and two percent of all calls for V M S C area is located in Hatfield Borough.
Any questions? All right, thought we'll go to the engineering report.
Monthly engineering report was included in your packets, the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty two road movie surfacing projects. We're just waiting on certified payrolls from the contractor prior to making payment. We had it on the draft agenda for this meeting. Just have not received that documentation yet. So we're gonna have to push it off till October. I wanted to bring to your attention Bennett's Court, which used to be Prestige, but now it's Lennar. So Lennar Builders had bought, um, Bennett's Court from Prestige and they are putting E N S controls out there now, moving soil once they get their grading permit. So that project is going to be starting. Steve, uh, worked with Lennar and distributed notification to all residents on Maple Avenue that are in the area. To let them know that, hey, this project didn't go away and it's about to start again because, you know, we started talking about it before COVID, then. Passed the resolution in twenty twenty two. So it's been quite a while since conversation has been taking place with those residents.
Any, and there hasn't been any feedback from the resident?
No, there were a couple of phone calls, um, that Steve received as well as myself, just about parking. Um, to making sure that they have access to the alley that was behind their house on Maple Avenue. And that was part of the zoning hearing board order for that development that the developer had to upgrade that alleyway and put storm in. But, um, that access had to be maintained. So I had talked to Lennar and that was discussed. There was also discussion about Mrs. Lurch's property because she parks on the side of her house there and in and out with, um, when they're gonna be paving. Would it be an option for council to consider making a temporary spot on Maple Avenue assigned to her? While that portion was going on, so the tractor trailers could like turn in. And I said, yeah, that would have to be a discussion when we got there for Borough Council to talk about. Those are really the only two comments that I've received from residents and I'm not sure if Steve had it and others.
Item F, the borough's tax collector.
We received this email from Mohammed. Who unfortunately has to resign as tax collector for Hatfield Borough as he is. Moving out of Hatfield Borough and moving into Tumnens and Township. Uh, this is on for consideration to, um, accept his resignation this evening.
That starts the clock there. When you accept his resignation, that starts the clock for your case.
The, and what is that timeframe, Matt Russell?
And then if our council can't do it, it goes to the vacancy board. And if the vacancy board can't do it, it goes to court. So.
If we accept today, what's the, when do we have to accept it by? Isn't there a time period once we receive?
There is a time period and it hasn't expired. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I'm sure. Think you have to accept it in thirty days. So it's close.
Those thirty days and the thirty days to get it replaced.
And it has to be done at a public meeting. So you probably don't have another public meeting before September twenty eighth, right? Now, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the third day to have if we accept it tonight, the next thirty days.
I think you have to accept it.
And then, um, we've also talked about, uh, putting it out. And see if we have, once we do that, we'll.
We have placed it on social media, placed it on our website, um, that if anyone is interested, please send, um, a letter. Of interest or qualifications to admin at hatfieldborough.com where they can drop it off at the corner of the office. And we are accepting those until September twenty ninth, which it hopes that we will receive some letters and that the people that are interested could come to the October meeting and their questions could be asked. Um, of those and council and American ask any questions or qualifications of those who are interested. And then either depending council's decision could appoint a tax collector on October fourth, or they could wait until the following, um, weeks for at the regular meeting. That's kind of the timeframe because then we would still be within those thirty days.
Any questions from council?
I would only say, yes, I thought of recruiting somebody. Now that, to look around for people who, who may be perfectly appropriate and don't even realize that the opening is there.
All right. If there's some more questions, we'll go on to item seven, old business, resolution twenty twenty three dash twelve, recognizing public power week.
This is an annual resolution that Hatfield Borough does, recognizing public power week, October first through the seventh, twenty twenty three. This year is the thirty seventh annual public power week and Lindsay, Steve and I, after Fall Fest, and we get that taken care of, we're gonna get together to try to come up with some. You know, little things that we could do to promote public power week. I think last year we had the bucket truck out front on a day that the kids were off and they could come check it out. We did some coloring contests. We just wanna continue to push public power week. So we're looking to do that as well this year. And that resolution's on for consideration as an action item this evening.
Any questions?
God bless you. You sneeze and I have like a permanent tickle in my.
All right, if there's no questions, we'll go on to open side of B, our resolution twenty twenty three dash thirteen, recognizing power prevention week.
This is an annual resolution recognizing national fire prevention week. Fire prevention week this year is October eighth through fourteen. And the Hatfield Volunteer Fire Company is going to have an open house on October twenty four. So this resolution that's on for consideration as an action item, if approved, we could go to the open house and present them as we've done in the past.
Any questions on that? All right, now we'll go to old business item C, resolution twenty twenty three dash fourteen, closure of certain borough roads.
This is a resolution authorizing the closure of East Lincoln Avenue in the borough for the Fall Fest and Car Show. Again, as I mentioned earlier, that, um, weather pending, we will make an announcement on Friday if unfortunately we would have to cancel that event. Um, we're hoping that we obviously do not have to do that and this is on for consideration as an action item this evening.
Any questions? If none, we'll get to the action items. Item A, so, all right, we'll start. Motion to consider resolution twenty twenty three dash twelve, recognizing public power week. I got a motion from council and a presser, a second from council, but, uh, Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? There are none, motion passed. All right, item B, motion to consider resolution twenty twenty three dash thirteen, recognizing fire prevention week. I got a motion from councilman Stevens, a second from councilman Presser. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passed. Item C, motion to consider a resolution twenty twenty three dash fourteen, closure of certain borough roads for the annual Fall Fest events. I got a motion, councilman Gerard, a second, councilman Presser. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passed. All right, last motion or item D, motion to consider accepting the resignation of the Hatfield Borough tax collector, Mohammed Hawk. I got a motion, councilman Stevens, a second from councilman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none. So with regret, we do accept his resignation. All right, item nine, motion to approve the payment of the bills. I got a motion, councilman Gerard, a second, councilman Stevens. Any questions, changes or amendments? Oh, question, uh, the Hatfield Health Department, the Fireman's Relief Association, that's an annual? Okay.
Yeah, we've received that from, uh, the state and then we pay that, pass that on.
All right, if there are questions, all in favor? Opposed? There are none, motion passed. All right, uh, we're not gonna have an executive session as stated earlier. Um, we will continue our, uh, planning. Meeting, repeated planning meeting after this. So can I get a motion to adjourn the council meeting? We got a motion from councilman Presser, a second from councilman Gerard. If there are no objections, all in favor? There are none. All right. Thank you, everybody.